Item 3B, Receive Professional School-Based Mentor Program Update. Dr. Aguilar.
Good evening, Mr. Gluck, Board Members, Dr. Morrison. I'm so excited for you to hear about the first semester update of the Professional School-Based Mentoring Program. And here tonight to present the update is none other than Dr. Adolf Brown.
Good evening, Mr. Gluck, Trustees, Dr. Morrison, and Members of the Leadership Team. I'm Dr. Adolf Brown, and I'm delighted to be here tonight to talk about the Professional School-Based Mentoring Program. In fact, I want to start off by saying how this is different from traditional mentoring programs. Mentoring works for the walking worried, so to speak, for children with problems consistent with human growth and development. However, mentoring programs are needed for our highest-risk students, and that's where most mentoring programs fall short. This program does not. It trains professionals here in G.I.S.D. to handle the highest-risk students in the district. The program overview, it's a best practice, it's an evidence-based best practice, one-to-one, as all mentoring programs should be. However, the professional mentoring program that we have here is evaluated. Mentors are constantly observed. They receive intense training, monthly, and the program is also constantly evaluated using SMART goals. One of the things I'd also like to mention, oftentimes when we think of mentoring or the highest-risk students in any school district, we think of certain demographics. I want it to be clear that high-risk is not a homogeneous population. Our mentoring program will address, or has addressed, the gifted learner with anxiety issues, to the young person with anger management issues. To date, we're using the ABC model, the academic attitude, behavior targets, as well as curriculum. We basically focus on the whole child, the whole student, meaning every child is challenged, healthy, engaged, supported, and safe. Everyone talks about engaged students. Schools can't do it alone. We have community supports, Community Call to Actions. We have family university, or parent-university meetings, whereby parents are empowered to become partners with the school. We also have teacher training, and that's relevant based on all the research available to each and every one of us, from the elementary level to the high school level. The fact that it takes three high-performing educators in elementary school to preserve a child's academic self-esteem and self-concept; and middle school, making sure that children understand the difference between mistakes and bad choices as we get into more hormonal types of issues; and in high school, making sure that every student is educated for life. The program has many goals, and many of these goals have been achieved, actually, the majority of them. Improved academic performance, improved scholastic competence and confidence, homework completion, attendance, reduction in behaviors that would call students to receive referrals, teacher-parent training, parent and community engagement. The trainings that the professional school-based mentors receive are the issues most relevant, not only in public education in America, but the issues most relevant in G.I.S.D., ranging from diversity and equity training, prevention and intervention strategies for the highest-risk youth, classroom management, coaching, educational leadership, and of course, one of the hottest topics today, differentiated instruction. Of a team of about 63 individuals, both nationally and internationally known, recognized as experts in their respective fields, 32 have been assigned to Garland. Here are some of the experts that frequent your district, ranging from retired educators, retired school superintendents, early child development specialists, community engagement specialists, equity and diversity experts. And yesterday, we were fortunate to have, and exposed our children and families to, one of the first Hispanic women rocket scientists, who's also one of our experts in STEM. We also believe in making sure that not just the students refer to the program, receive prevention strategies or intervention strategies. We think every student is capable of being at risk. We offer student motivational assemblies. Motivation's not enough. Our assemblies are characterized by character choices and consequences, making sure that at the end of the day, all students recognize the importance of being accountable and responsible for their education, for their behavior in school, how they represent their families, and ultimately, how they represent the community. We also have many family events and trainings, ranging from effective communication with children, "Our Children Are Not Our Friends," that's probably one of the most popular, "Rearing Responsible and Respective Young People," and "Character Education Begins at Home." I want to pause there. We do that, we say it begins at home, but we also recognize that not every child comes from a home. We recognize that, we make sure that the professional mentors recognize that, that not everyone will come from an environment of consistency, structure limits, and boundaries, that sometimes young people that we have in classrooms are actually the adults in their This is just a short video of the parent, or one of the parent universities that we have facilitated. The parent universities are fun and engaging, but ultimately, everything that we do has to be sustainable. We believe that if you can't measure it, you can't monitor it, you can't manage it. The parents here at every event we do, they make a commitment. They make a videotaped commitment, a video to be shown in their children's school, whether at lunchtime, as they walk through the halls, but a video where they see their parents and guardians and grandparents making a pledge to support their schooling in G.I.S.D.
We're going to watch the very opening of it, and then I'm going to scoot to the parent pledges. The entire video can be seen on our video segment in the website. For you to see him looking a little different than he does tonight. And then I will scoot it forward to our parent pledges here. A little too far.
I'm going to commit to not yelling so much at my children, spending more quality time.
I'm going to be the best grandfather, patience, faith, and love, and kindness.
I commit to be more fun, and more firm, and way more fair than I have been in the past.
Hi, we're the Garcia's. In our house, we're going to have a lot of fun, we're going to be fair, and we're going to thank God every day.
I commit to having more fun and not taking things more s- not taking things as serious.
And I also commit to make our home a home of love, laughter, and listening.
I just want to give you an encouraging message today to always do your best and bring out your excellence. I don't expect you to be perfect, but I expect you to always do your best.
I promise that every teacher, every administrator, and everyone that you come across will always see my face and know that you have my support. I love you, and I'll be here, I'll go the distance. Love you.
I'm going to always pray for you, and you're going to always have your back.
Hi, I'm Eric Harris. This is my son Elijah Harris. He go to Aubanyan Middle School. And what I'm taking from this is learning to be a balcony parent, more so than just firm. Going to work on showing him more positive reinforcements and showing him more love than just saying it.
Hello, we're the Green Family, and one thing that we're always going to make sure we do is always-
I want you to notice the line. But I also want you to notice the diversity.
Hi, my name is Adriana Janini. I am the mother of these two proud boys, Jordan and Joshua, and I'm committed today to be a fun mom for them, to be firm, to be fair between each of them, and to have faith always in God, that He will provide for us all the time.
Hi, we're Shane and Emily. Our kids go to Kimberlin, and we promise to have more fun at home with our children instead of working.
Mommy's going to have fun, and maybe I'll stop working a little bit in the evenings while you guys are home, and we will rock it.
I would like to commit to my kids that I'm going to love their mother more than I ever did before, because it's very important to keep our family together. And I will commit to support my teachers in my greatest district, and also themselves to make a better life for themselves and for our community.
I just want to let you know that I'm going to help you to achieve your highest potential, and I'll always be there to help you get up once you fall.
Hi, thank you, Dr. Brown. That was a very inspirational speech and teaching us. I think I learned a lot from you, and these are my two granddaughters, Angelina and Shiloh, and I've been raising them, and that's why I wanted to come, to see what I could learn, and-
Give it up for those families. The community events were of the same magnitude. We had a call to action. We basically asked community members to come out, show your support. But it was bigger than that. We gave them ways to actually help support G.I.S.D. Some of the training topics were becoming a partner in public education, becoming a stakeholder in learning. And one of the ways that we helped them commit to G.I.S.D. was we told them to advocate, participate, or donate. Advocate. Speak positively about your district. It's easy to say negative things. Many of us wake up scanning the environment for negativity. We asked parents, we asked the community to look for positivity in G.I.S.D., but not just look for it, talk about it. For those that would advocate, we also asked to participate, and we told them how. Numerous parents signed up, committed at least four hours to participate, to volunteer in various schools in the G.I.S.D. And lastly, if they couldn't necessarily participate, we told them that G.I.S.D. would welcome a donation. Here's a small clip from one of the community call to actions.
Tonight was wonderful. I do have five children in the G.I.S.D. district, and it has been a blessing and a pleasure to be a part of this district, and Dr. Brown really shared some very important information to help us to be better parents, grandparents, and also to help the children in school.
Then if you sit back and complain and do nothing, your voice won't be heard, and that doesn't deserve to be heard. What's your name?
Adugo.
Adugo, that's a very strong name for a beautiful girl. And guess what? Whenever my daughters are told they're beautiful, this is what I tell them to tell me. So if I call you beautiful, you're beautiful.
I'm smart, too.
It was a pleasure being here tonight, seeing Mr. Brown to bring my son out. It was very delightful, and I just wanted to thank him and everybody around. And G.I.S.D. is a good school district to be at, and I'm very proud to be a mom at Rollins High School.
And again, both of these videos can be viewed in their entirety, because they're much longer, but for the sake of time tonight, we're not showing them all, but they can be viewed in their entirety on the video section of our website.
Give it up for the community. The students we serve, we currently serve 259 students. There are lists of the elementary and secondary campuses that are currently being served. Who are the students we're serving? At the elementary school level, 31 African-Americans, 18 Hispanic students, 11 white students, five multi-ethnic students, and one Asian student. At the secondary level? The next steps. To continue to increase the number of students being served, 259 high-risk students is a great start, but there are many, many more students, not only waiting to be a part of the program, but students actually calling, parents calling, for their students to be a part of this program. Our goal is to move from 259 to 1,200 students district-wide over the next five years. In doing so, we would identify 13 more campuses to participate in the Professional School-Based Mentoring Program, as well as identify additional personnel to be trained to become professional school-based mentors. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we have a few individuals from Bussie that would like to speak about their experience being a part of the Professional School-Based Mentoring Program. We have a student and a grandmother.
Well, I just want to say, I'm very nervous right now. My name is Julian Leha, and I come from Bussie Middle School. And I just wanted to thank you for asking me to be here tonight. Like, it's really, I like, I take it to the heart. Thank you. And I really wanted to talk about Dr. Brown's mentoring program. It's been really helpful in like so many ways. Like, my mentor, every time I see him, he just asks me, like, "How's your day going?" And like, you know, nobody asks me that, you know? Like, nobody, I feel like nobody cares enough about how I'm feeling, or how my day's going, and that like lifts me up, you know, gives me the spirit to keep on going. He's taught me how to control myself, how to control my anger, say for, like, not only in school, like, at my house, too. Like, when my parents are yelling at me, saying, "Oh, why'd you do this, and why'd you do that?" You know, you know, I can feel myself like, but then I think, I think, like, what he told me to do, and I breathe, and I feel myself calming down. And I know I can talk to my mentor about anything, and he just comes at me with, "Oh, well, you can do it this way, you can do it that way," and just so many ways to control it, or so many ways to handle it, and I just, I feel like great. And he tells me every day that, like, because I feel pressured, I feel like real pressured, I don't know why, but like, I just, I can't handle it sometimes, and he tells me, "Everything's going to be okay, that you got it, you know, just keep your head up and keep on moving forward, push yourself, like, push yourself to the limit, and keep your head up, and keep on going, because I believe in you. There's people that love you, and they care for you." And, I mean, his, I don't know what to call it, his meetings or whatever, y'all want to call it. They're funny, and they help me understand that my parents, they go through, like, hard times, and I see why they get frustrated, and he's helped me understand that life's hard, it's really hard. But when you fall, you got to get back up, and you got to, you got to think about the mistake you made, and don't make it the next time that you do it. And say for, if someone's having a bad day, like, just ask them, like, you know, "How are you doing? How's your day going?" So they know that someone actually does care, that someone's there for them, that if they need anything, that I'm here to talk to you about it, I'm here to listen. And before this, I'm going to give an example of how it was. Picture yourself walking down the street, you know, you're walking, you know nothing, you just, "All right, yeah, nice." There's a hole, you know, you don't know what's there, right? You fall in, you don't know what to do, you're scared, you're panicking, and someone helps you, you know, they say, "I got you." They pick you up, you're like, "All right, yeah, I did it, I made it." Come down the same road, you know the hole is there, you look at it, but you still fall. You're thinking, "Man, why did I fall again? What's going on?" And you're like, "I've got out before, I'm going to try to do it, I'm going to do it." You get out, but you barely make it, you know, you crawl out. You walk down the same road, you look at it, you step back, come forward, and you jump in it. Why would you jump back in it? Why, you know? You done did it like three times already, why do it again? I feel the reason why I did that was because I didn't know what was on the other side of that hole. I didn't know if what was on that side of the hole was greater than me, or just a new life, and I thought, "I can make it, I get out, I walk down the same street, I look at the hole, I jump over it," because I thought, "You're going to do the same thing over and over again, not thinking why you're doing it, and you hop over it, and there's a new life, it's a new you. You're someone different, you know, there's like, just, it's beautiful, you don't know what's going on, you're just like, wow, nice, I've never seen this before, you know? You're surprised, you know, you're happy, you feel great." And I think that me hopping over that hole was getting into this program, because if it wasn't for this program, if it wasn't for him making me laugh every time I went to one of his meetings, I think I would have been in juvie, or I would have been in jail. I mean, because, don't get me wrong, in sixth grade and the seventh grade, I was really bad, I was, I made a lot of mistakes. Yeah, and now, I'm in school, you know, I'm learning, and I feel great about it. I go home, and my dad asks me, "How's your day going?" And usually, I'd be like, you know, I don't want to talk about it, but I go home with a happy attitude. I say, "You know, it's been great, how's your day? How's your day? How you been?" You know, we don't talk that much, you know, because he's sick, you know, and it's hard, it's hard for me to talk to my dad, because it's either he's always laying down, or he's sick or something, you know? But this program helped me, like, fight that, like, know that he's going to, one day, he's going to be good, and I got to be strong for him, and that's what this program helped me with, is to be a better me, the better me than I was yesterday. That's all.
Good evening. I am elated to be here. My name is Doretha Wilson. I'm a grandparent of one of the students at Bussie Middle School. On behalf of my grandson, Dr. Brown, I'd like to thank you for all that you have done for him. Jalen was a special, well, not a special student, he was an at-risk student. He come from divorced parents, and because of your program, he has succeeded in so many different areas. He's had so many obstacles that, you know, making better choices, he's now making better choices, his grades are perfect, and I thank you for being there for him, and being there for many of the students at Bussie Middle School. Thank you to the G.I.S.D. School Board and to Ms. Garcia for allowing that program to be there for them, so that they can have someone as a mentor to look up to. And I just wanted to come and personally thank you for that.
Dr. Brown, could you ask the young man to come up for me? One second. Sir, I have a feeling that maybe in a few years, you'll be sitting up here. Thank you very much.
Again, I want to thank you for having the program. I was mentioned quite a bit throughout the night, but no one does it alone. We're able to do, our team's able to do what we do, because we have people like Ms. Janet McDade. Please stand. Thank you. Dr. Ramona Aguilar. And of the over 30 professional school-based mentors, please applaud the ones that are here tonight. This program does a great job of closing the achievement gap within school districts, but it's so much larger than that. Everyone talks about achievement gap, it doesn't start with data, it starts with relationships, relationships and engagement. On a national level, I want to applaud G.I.S.D., because this program came about almost 20 years ago, based on a national concern in public education, known as the school-to-prison pipeline, whereby some schools that didn't necessarily understand students, or all students, educators that didn't necessarily engage all students, that some of these students were referred for minor infractions. And as a result of those referrals, over time, our criminal justice system is now able to use data from public schools and elementary school to build more prisons. Of that prison-to-pipeline study, and there have been multiple in 20 years, of course, the students that are the highest affected by this are African-American students and Latino students. So I want to thank G.I.S.D. Not only- So I want to thank G.I.S.D. not only for closing the achievement gap right here in Texas, but for also ensuring that we can also get rid of that pipeline. Mr. Axe, it's good to see you. Thank you for coming out last night. I'll open it up for questions. Anybody have any questions, Dr. Brown? Sir, we, we thank you very much, and thank you for the program for our children. Thank you.